First will be 2017-10, Richard and Kelly Lobel, 37 Jaffray Court. Second will be 2017-07, Shayna Liebman, 3 Cedar Lawn Road. Third will be 2015-32, Ardsley Country Club.
Oh, no. That's not that.
No. Let's loose.
Yeah.
Oh, they're going to come late? All right, so then we'll leave that as the end. Okay. Then, sorry, the number three will be 2017-11, Katolo and Tei, 23 Dearman Close. Four will be 2017-17, Cuff, 3 Oak Street. Fifth will be 2017-16, Steinberg, 5 Hugh Hill Lane. Sixth will be 2017-15, Russe, 24 South Buckout Street. Seventh will be 2017-18, Cohen, 21 Matheson Park. And last will be 2015-32, Ardsley Country. So before we begin, though, everybody is up to date on their taxes?
Yes.
Right? And you also have minutes from the June meeting. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes? Any comments? I think you circulated them, made some corrections on them, some edits. So can I have a motion then to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes from June are approved. So the first item then is 2017-10, Lobel, 37 Jaffray Court. Hey, just in time.
Hi, Douglas McClure for the Lobels at 37 Jaffray Court. I've come back after our last meeting, answered the majority of Han's questions, I believe, including the breakdown for the coverage calculations. Do I want me to go through the project again?
I don't think so. I think Doug Han had a letter or memo with their four or five items.
Yes, those are easily addressable. I actually emailed a response to them today. Item number one, have already added the name of the surveyor to the drawings, and I'll resubmit those signed and sealed drawings we'll also submit. Item three, it does appear will require railing at these new blue stone steps, and the client's deciding what kind of railing they want now, so when I file...
Yeah, you can put on the set for this approval to set railing.
Sure.
And then we'll deal with it later.
Perfect. The light rectangular object in Zone 1 on drawing LA1 is a, some kind of accidental remnant that the landscape architect designer put on there and didn't delete. It's, I think it had text in it or something.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not coverage. And the bench is a furniture bench, it's not a permanent structure.
Ed, Doug, did you have any other comments on this?
I asked this question last time, and I think you gave us that, but I don't remember it, it doesn't show up. The French drain in the driveway, where does it go?
The trench drain, actually, there's a whole drainage system that comes around and comes out this riprap area. That was all designed and approved when they did their deck back in.
I thought it was a south wrap.
Whenever.
Right, right, Ed?
Any other comments? No? Ed, you're okay with the...
Yeah, my concern is around the village right of way.
Okay. Any comments from anyone in the audience? No? Okay, then, Mary Ann, do you have a resolution on this item?
Whereas in June 2017, Richard and Kelly Lobel applied for site development plan approval to modify the hardscape and landscaping at their house at 37 Jaffray Court, which is located in the Village of Free Preservation Overlay District. And whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated June 6 listed a number of issues, many of which were addressed in a subsequent submission, and the planning board held a public hearing on the application on June 7th and July 11th, whereas the improvements would not impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties and adjacent rights of way. It's a Type 2 action under secret, so doesn't require environmental review. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Front Side Entry Planting and Hardscape," prepared by Hudson Landscape Contractors and Lobel Residence, drawings prepared by MC Architecture, subject to compliance with the items listed in the Han memorandum dated July 10, 2017.
Can I have a motion?
Roger.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item is 2017-07, Liebman, 3 Cedar Lawn Road.
Good evening. My name is Sam Viera. I am the project architect. As I pointed out in my cover letter, originally when this application came before your board back in May, the house was on the market, and during that period of submission and responses from Han Engineering, the closing occurred. So we've resubmitted an application, just simply changing the name of the owner. The previous owners continue to be responsible for the outcome of, you know, this situation. So I'm here today to continue with the application. And it's, in essence, what happened was it was a small stone patio at the rear of the house, and the owners extended it because there's a lot of rock ledge out there to create a larger, more usable patio. They did that without permits, and so therefore we're here in an attempt to get approval from this board for the expansion of the patio in an effort to legalize it. We've revised the site plan with the original comments from Han Engineering, and also, as outlined on my cover letter, the additional square footage patio increases the coverage of an already non-conforming piece of property. So if we were to move forward, we would need zoning board approval of variance for additional coverage.
Okay. Any comments from anyone on the board?
The French drain along the right side, it has a drainage pipe to the surface.
To the surface, that's correct.
And it's very close to the neighboring property and uphill to the neighboring property. How do you keep the drainage from going to the other property?
So, I mean, the concept is that most of the water will be caught in this French drain and absorbed.
Yeah, I know, then it goes to a pipe that's a couple of feet to the neighboring property, uphill to the neighboring property.
Right, and the neighboring property, the high point of the neighboring, the house sits right here, and it all slopes away from the house. So even if there is some overflow that makes it towards and over the wall, which is because the topography is such that it's coming down this way.
There is a wall there?
This is a retaining wall. And the topography of this neighbor...
Which side has the, is the high side of the wall?
The neighbor's side. So you're correct in assuming that potentially the water could go down to the neighbor, but it...
Or through the wall.
Or through the wall. But it's a topography such that it should continue to run either alongside the wall, any wall that does...
Well, I looked at the topography, it slopes left to right.
Left to right. But the house sits here, and this is all open. And though we don't have the topography of the neighbors, the topography continues. So any water that might come out from the outlet will continue to go across.
Doug, did you reveal?
It's going in that direction anyway, and now we're going to have infiltration, so I believe it's going to be a benefit.
It's not a direct catch and release, it's more of an overflow in case of these very large storms. Under normal rainfall, the water theoretically should never make it to that outlet.
I mean, did they supply numbers on this in terms of what kind of storm would be handled by the French drain?
It's already a rock surface underneath, so it's already solid long, so we thought it'd be dust. There's really no way to tie it into the system or put another system in for this patio. So through review, we started bringing it out to the front, and the French drain system would get rid of the water that was impacting the wall and bring it out to the front. Only, like, if you go out there and look at it from the street, you'll see it can't impact the neighbor's property until three or four feet from her, if it ever makes it that far.
So the French drain, you accept, you expect some infiltration in the drain itself?
Yeah, in the winter months, for sure.
When it's frozen solid.
Another point is that this is naturally bedrock, there's very little coverage here. So the fact that the French drain will actually exist will prevent water that would naturally have run off regardless, you know...
So it's going to take it into the French drain, it's going to channel it towards the front and away from the house.
Absorb it, right, absorb it. The outlet is simply an overflow, like all systems. It's not meant like a normal leader drain that catches everything, that comes off the roof and shoots it out. It's simply an overflow.
You guys are, you guys, Doug and Ed, you both all right with this?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments from anyone in the audience?
We looked at a couple different ones there, and it seemed like the best.
Okay. Then, Mary Ann, do you have a...
Yeah, I did prepare a resolution. I made it in Liebman's name, just so the file would be confused. Previously, it was an application by Silver, but since you put in a whole new application, I just treat it as a new one. Whereas in July 2017, Shayna Liebman applied for site development plan approval to legalize the patio that had been constructed by a previous owner on a property at 3 Cedar Lawn to install a curtain drain. And whereas the patio requires variance for coverage, Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and in a memorandum dated yesterday, listed two items to be addressed in revised drawings. Planning board held a public hearing on the application tonight. The action's a Type 2 under reaction under secret. It resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawing entitled "Expansion of Rearstone Patio at Liebman Residence," prepared by Samuel Viera Architect, subject to, one, obtaining an area variance from the zoning board of appeals, and, two, compliance with the items listed in the Han memorandum dated July 10.
All right, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.
The next item is 2017-11, Lucy Katolo and Christopher Tei, 23 Dearman Close.
All right, good evening.
Yes?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Walco. I'm here from Opichich Architects, representing Lucy Katolo and Christopher Tei for the property at 23 Dearman Close. So in response to last, the last meeting when we were here, the main, well, one of the main issues was addressing the building setback on it in the back, in order for which we've shifted the building and cleared that building setback. So, and we have moved the driveway and changed the orientation of the entrance to the garage, which eliminates any disruption back here with...
...the building.
And keeps it all within what is previously established as part of the subdivision plat as the building envelope. Additionally, we have enhanced the elevations, or the exterior elevations, which should help illustrate more clearly what is going on in terms of the siting of the building in order to maximize the use of the existing topography and create as, a little visual impact on the street and then also to the neighbors as much as possible, and work with what we have in order to amplify what we're doing with the building. Additionally, we've provided the landscaping layout with screening for the neighbors and have responded to some of the, or a number of the concerns that were brought up in the engineering letter with respect to showing utilities and illustrating that we're connecting where it was originally indicated as part of the subdivision plat, so that we're not interfering or trying to modify what was previously approved. And I'll just address the elephant in the room about the trees, which were cut down in advance. And fortunately, that was a little bit of over enthusiasm on the part of the contractor that the client had hired, and his or their directive was to clean up the property, which was previously used and approved as a dumping site during the development of the subdivision. So the bulk of the trees in this area that were removed were, have been within the limits of what the building siting is, and so... I lost the dial again. And so those would have eventually needed to come down anyway, following our approval, obviously, during the normal course of action. The two questionable trees in the front, the one here, which is directly on the rock, had a very shallow root system of about two feet or less, which caused great concern to the homeowners and its potential for collapse or damage during a severe storm event. And this tree here was in bad shape due to the fact that this was, as I stated previously, an approved and used as a dumping site during the development of the rest of the subdivision. Now, the client understands that we, there is some mitigating measures that have to be taken place in terms of filling in in order to offset some of what was lost there, and so we're amenable.
Any comments from anyone on the board?
The plants didn't change. Did the design of the house change? I mean, it's a very modern house compared to...
It is a very modern house. The design of the house per se didn't change. The main change was in the orientation of the back here with the garage in order, because previously we had the access coming into the back, which would have, which was prohibited because of the building construction limit setback. So the orientation of the entrance to the garage was modified in order to facilitate shifting the building forward slightly and then allowing for the entrance on the side to preserve that building setback limit. But the main aesthetic of the house and the layout, as was previously submitted, didn't change significantly, although the elevations are now clearly AutoCAD and therefore more defined than they were in the previous design submission.
Can you go over the defined elevations, especially about the rock?
George, can you pull the microphone out?
Yes.
Can I...
Can you go through the elevations with the rock, the rock outcropping, please?
Yes. So, do you want to speak? Yeah, you want to speak?
Good evening. Rad Opichich, Principal of Opichich Architects. So the upper elevation, which is our plateau, is the top of the rock at 444, and that is our upper elevation. The entrance, it's an upside-down house. The bedrooms are low and the main space is up high. So the main living space is on the upper level, which includes the living room, kitchen, dining room, family room, and office. And down below, we have the master suite on the this wing, and the children's bedrooms are underneath the garage in the lower level, below the garage. The entrance is at 437, and the lowest point of the building, which is the gym in this location, is at 428.
I was actually asking about the actual elevations that were done.
The building elevation or the site?
Yeah, not the site elevations, but we'll get to that.
The upper elevation is at 447?
No, no. Here's the thing that I'm looking for, is that before you came, before you came in with sort of atmospheric elevations.
The upper elevation.
Okay. But I was trying to figure out how you're dealing with, how you're integrating with this rock outcropping, and I don't see that necessarily in that elevation. So I'm looking for, what does this look like from the street? What am I looking at? How is this building sitting on this landscape that's there? I don't see it, so maybe you have it somewhere else.
There's a second elevation. Paige wants to open up.
The rock that you're speaking of...
You need to use the microphone for the trench.
Sorry. My microphone, girl.
Do you have the other drawings that you did last time, the elevations that you did last time?
No, I don't have those with us. The rock that we're... Okay. The rock that you're referring to is down, is here, and it's down at the 440. It's below where our upper level floor is. All right, so it would be living. Oops, a little back. Right, so that rock is going to be down in here.
Right, so I'm clearly interested in knowing what this looks like from the street, okay? And I don't know if I see that...
I think you have to go to the next elevation.
Well, this is the speed elevation.
Yeah.
Right.
Your other drawing that you showed, which you're going, someone's going to get out, we commented that it was a little vague about that, and we asked for it to be a little more detailed. So that's what I was looking for, is to comprehend how this, since there's no model, there's nothing else, how are you dealing with this rock outcropping in your house? And I don't see that necessarily.
Okay, so this is not, this is not, this is not far enough that, so that you can see this retaining wall, seeing if you want the street...
You need to use the microphone.
Please, sir.
You got to, you got to.
So this is the elevation, this is the elevation of the building, but it's cutting through the upper terrace. And what you're looking for is further back...
Yeah, that's more of a sectional elevation to me, and what I'm looking for is more from the street, what someone's going to see this house, and specifically that retaining wall, okay? Which I don't, was very vaguely mentioned on the other drawings, and we asked for more clarity.
Okay, so we'll have to do that, but basically, this is going to be a drywall, retaining wall, which at this point, it starts off at, you know, seven, eight feet, and then you work its way into the block. So you can see, you know, there's a lot of drawing of that, so you can...
Excuse me, if you go to sheet A-2.1, the lower elevation, I think, is what I'm concerned about, and I think George is talking about, because as far as I can make out, that's the elevation that I'm going to see as I'm driving up the hill towards Dearman Close. And I'm rounding the bend, and then your neighbor is to the left, and I'm going to be looking at your main entrance there and that wall, which is about 17 feet high.
Well, it's 17 feet at this point.
Yeah, about 17 feet at the road.
No, no, this is 14 feet.
Well, that's, how do you get that? I mean, you have 445 at the top of that second little wall, and you're down...
But this wall is setback four feet from this wall, so it's Dearman back.
Well, look, you're down, you're down at 437 midway down the wall, so you've got to figure that, that's another at least eight feet down. So I'm figuring you're at 429 at the bottom, and you're at 445 at the top. You're 437 to the right, although your own elevation shows a 437.
I'm 437 here, yeah.
Right. So if you look...
And it's 17 feet.
Yes, I'm figuring, that looks like it's about a 17-foot-high wall that you're going to see as you're driving up the road, coming towards the house. And I think that is a bit overpowering.
We actually have had several, many, who have come in with new designs here and had issues with walls half, even a third this size, because it just becomes a monolith there. And what we're looking for is some way to integrate with the natural aesthetic that's up there, as opposed to putting something that is then kind of empowering over that landscape. So that's why I wanted to further understand how you were kind of integrating it.
We were seeing this as a feature wall.
Right, and I think that...
And that's an important element of our design, so...
I think that what we're looking for is really from the, again, from the street level, is not to have this as a walled-in compound, but is somehow is integrated with the landscape that's up there and the specific rock outcroppings which exist all over the place, so that we don't have just this vestige of what's up there and then something else that is completely overpowering, is what you say you're planning to do. So from a both perspective, that's why I was looking for more clarity of understanding what you were doing.
For us, and we will show it to you in the model and additional drawings, but for us, this was a retaining wall that creates this upper terrace for us, which is very important, and a feature wall that kind of leads you into the entrance on the building. So we were embracing that wall.
Right, and at least me specifically, is trying to figure out how this relates to the street, how this relates to the village, and how we can incorporate the various aspects of this site and this hill up there, so it doesn't look like you sort of just did what, it ignores those things. So I would strongly ask you to look at if there are ways that you can mitigate vertical walls that are 15 feet high, that then have a railing above that, that make it so that it's, you know, it's a two-story wall. I don't know of walls like that that exist, other than walls that are, let's say, at most 10 feet along Broadway. I don't know of places like this. Perhaps you do, but I don't.
I think you've got to find a way to reduce the impact of that wall, at least, because that house is sitting at the highest point of that development. And so your house is then on top of the highest point. So as you drive up, the first thing you see is the 17, 15-foot wall, and then sitting on top of the wall is the two stories of the house. And that is going to be sitting...
One story of the house.
One story. But you're already considerably higher than your neighbor to the left, to the west of you. Yeah, because the property drops off precipitously there, because of that rock outcrop. So I think you've got to, you've got to do something to make it blend in a bit more to the site and its surroundings, and to soften the impact as one approaches this house and as one is going to see it from various locations on the street and from the neighboring houses.
We have a, you know, what we, the design is, is working with the existing rock outcrop, right? The rock is sloping away in this direction, and our building is stepping down and following the site, so that we're not digging 20 feet into the rock to accomplish the building. So it is working with the site, and this retaining wall is an important feature of the design. We will look at it, see how we can blend that in more than currently it is, but it is something that's important to us in terms of efficiency.
Yes, okay, in my opinion, what you want to do is, if you feel very strongly about it, then I think it's up to you to sort of present it in a way that gets your point across to the people that are concerned about it and that will become less concerned. But I think it's clear to, at least from...
Two of us. Three. Three. Four. Four.
There's big, there's big concerns with the walls, these walls that you're presenting that you think are important as a feature for this. So the onus really is on you. That's why when the atmospheric drawings were done, we wanted to understand what you were really doing, because those seemed a lot different than the plans, so...
Well, I mean, when that was made, the, what I understood to be the question was what the relationship was of the building to where the rock is located, not necessarily what, how the perception of the building is on the street. So I think, it wasn't clear that what we were looking for was a, an elevation of this that showed where we were on the street and how that all looked, because we were working with the topography.
Now you know, so that was the concern.
This is the first I'm hearing it. I love the wall, but I hear the concern. Go work through it.
Any other comments?
Let's go over these trees again. How many trees were cut down?
Two trees.
No, not...
Well, more than two. Most recently, but there were several that were cut down farther back on the side.
Right, so it's the, as I understand it, the five that were within the building envelope, and then these two in the front that we discussed.
Right. And in addition, right now, there's a pile of construction debris and large boulders sitting under that large tree on the west side of the property.
The street here.
Yeah, in the line of that tree. And that really needs to get added. And I think you're really, I think what I'd like to see, there's another tree back there that's dying and you might want to take a look at that. I think you should have an arborist go out there and take a look at those trees and, and see what the condition is and what needs to be done to those trees, if anything.
And the consequence of cutting down the five trees in the back?
And is there a consequence to that legally?
Consequence will be at the permanent stage. It'll be a violation.
Could be a violation.
Success to the permanent.
Well, I mean, what about putting the trees back?
The mitigation is this board's responsibility.
I mean, there are citizens in the village who can't take down a dead tree without the owner's permit process.
Right. And people that do take down the trees have to mitigate. They'll be mitigating. Mitigation, we decided by this board instead of the tree removal.
Right. So you'll need a landscape plan too, in addition.
Right. Well, we do have a beginning of the landscape plan. And we were providing what was, at least as a first pass, a significant addition to the property in terms of trees and other landscape features in order to offset some of what was taken down.
Any other comments?
Is there a way back to the wall?
Back?
Is there a way of terracing it to make it look softer and planting on each level?
We'll look at that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that would be one of the things that we'll look at as, as a possible solution.
Because it is, your eye is drawn to it whether you want it to be or not. That's the first thing you're going to see. You're not going to see the house, you're going to see the wall.
Well, I mean, clearly that depends on the approach and, you know...
Well, 99% of the people are going to be approaching from the, the direction where you see the wall.
This direction?
Right. They're not going to come up that other hill.
Oh, I came the wrong way. I came this way when I approached.
Yeah. A couple other comments. It talks about in, in the engineer's letter, a variance may be required for coverage and a variance for height. I mean, have you addressed those? Because this board will not look favorably upon variances for a brand-new building.
Uh, yes. We had that discussion with the building inspector already. We are working through the height question. We were under the, I was understanding that we were meeting the 15% slope criteria, which would allow the additional height that we're indicating. So we're working through with the building department to either confirm that what we're understanding is correct and then our height and state, or conversely, if that's not the case, make the adjustments in height so that no variance is required. And similarly with the coverage, there was a question about a couple of areas. When I looked at it following, receiving the comments, I believe most of the areas that are in question have already been calculated, they just weren't hatched, which is just a graphic problem. But we'll make sure that we're within compliance so that no variances are required.
And then at number 15, it does like the proposed walls on the property to the east on drawing C1 will require an easement.
Right. So if the board could give us a little bit more clarity on that.
Could you just point out those walls?
Well, I'm assuming...
The other drawings, the engineer's drawings.
The engineer's drawings, okay.
The other ones here?
Yep. On the left side. Okay. So we're talking about...
The ones on the right side of the driveway.
These guys here.
And the one that loops, that comes around onto the property.
This guy here.
Yeah. Are you proposing walls on the neighboring property?
Well, these, and we're, so these walls were suggested because it's not clear what, I mean, we only have the grading on the survey to a certain point. And so there was concern that where we were showing the driveway elevations, that some retainage might be needed. And that was going to be taking place within the driveway easement.
Well, but that, where you're proposing those walls is the easement for the next lot's access.
Within that 30 feet. And it's not 100% clear that these, that we actually need these in order to accomplish what we're doing with the driveway. And so what I'm taking from the comment or the feedback is that the object is to accomplish, or our object should be to accomplish the driveway without the addition of any walls within that driveway easement.
But on your property?
On your property, yes.
Remember, you're adding coverage to the neighboring lot.
Yes, I, I saw the coverage note.
With the wall.
What, yeah. So we'll work it out so that we don't need to do that.
Yeah.
But this wall, this wall here is not a problem as long as we have the coverage for that wall, right?
We would prefer not in the, therapy in the building envelope.
Right. So if we can, if we keep the retainage, if we need it at the back of the property, within our building, approved building envelope, that wall is fine as long as provided we have the coverage to accommodate it. Okay?
And then just, just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And also, so, but the wall along the property line here is not an issue, right?
It's an easement.
Right, okay.
It's on your property.
It's on, yeah.
We're talking about these walls here.
Yes.
That was only a few feet high, right? From one corner? That was only a few feet high, three, three feet high?
Uh, 446, yeah. Two, two feet, two and a half.
And then there were just some comments from the consulting landscape architect for the village, who they noted, I guess, that you were specifying a private hedge on the landscape plan and...
Oh, I saw that.
That private hedge is an invasive species.
Right. That was not cleared off, obviously, ahead. So we'll, we'll modify that so it's something that's more native. And similarly, I saw the note about that some of the other species are not necessarily native, so we'll see how we can modify that so that we're factoring in more indigenous plantings.
Right. Any other comments from any of the board members? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Before you come up, just take a, the microphone, please.
I can give a message, your thing.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Khaki, again. I spoke to the board last meeting. I think the discussion that just took place here sort of highlights what concern, one of the concerns I had expressed at that time, which was that, A, the water drainage study that is quoted in the papers goes back to early 2000. This is before some of the plans for developing this area were refined and so may not really be relevant at this point. Number two, the discussion that took place now even sort of further reinforces our concern, my concern, that there is going to be a significant issue in terms of water runoff. I can look over the property, we live next door to it for the last, since 1971, and this proposed construction will be sitting at the high point and covering several thousand square feet is going to create runoff that is going to occur towards areas which are downhill from that high point. And we are in that downhill area to adjacent to the property that is being developed. So that was one concern. And I think the board, I would request the board really to make sure that before any consideration is advanced on this, we should have a very clear understanding that there will be no runoffs that are going to cause water problems to the neighborhood properties that we are going to regret 10 years from now, but everybody will throw up their hands and say, geez, sorry, it happened and now what do we do about it? That is one concern. The other concern that I had mentioned and the village authorities raised it themselves is that there has been virtual deforestation of all the property along our line. Now, even if you try to mitigate it, mitigation really is probably meaningless, because you're not going to recreate the beautiful trees that have been taken down. And there's no requirement as to where these trees that the developer will put will be placed. They might put them at a very convenient place up front. So we will be left with the aesthetic disaster at the back of looking at this, this rather large building, just staring down at us with all those trees that were at one time there, part of the stone property, that have now been denuded. So I, I don't know what this particular board, the planning board, can do to ensure that we really meaningfully look at what the board can and must require of the developers before we proceed on, on this. Those were two concerns that I had raised. Yes. The third concern that I had forgotten to mention was the setback. And the village has requirement for setback. We have had a wall, a fence along our property ever since we bought that property in 1971 that is set within the stone line that demarcates the property line. I've seen markers actually on the outside of that particular stone line. I think what was pointed out to me is that this is something that I should talk to the people who are doing the construction about to make sure that we have a clarification as to where the property line is. I think that is quite proper. But beyond that, there's the issue that if the village is going to enforce the setback distance, the village will have to ascertain where that end of the property is, because you cannot say where the setback line should be unless you know where the property line actually physically is. So those are the three concerns that I had. And I would just ask the board to please consider those as we move to, to, to value this application.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you point to where your property is?
I believe he's to this...
Some barber line?
We're on janitor's...
Janitor's.
Nope.
Other side.
Just a...
Um, yours through Dearman Close. If I understand correctly, I think you're back this way.
I think he's more down in the, in the hollow, yes.
That's where all the runoff goes.
Yeah, half the property drains to his yard right now, but they're actually going to be redirecting a large portion out the opposite direction, so it should be, it should be better for you. Should have less water.
I think...
He's going to collect it and bring it the other direction.
We will be...
Based on the 2002 study that was...
No, based on the design.
The current design.
So we'll, so the engineer will be looking very closely at the runoff situation. We'll have our landscape architect take a look at what's being proposed in terms of landscape plan and this, what we'll be looking at physically, what, what the house and the site looks like in terms of its impact on the neighborhood.
But I also think that we should also look at what mitigation should be done for now your harm from these trees coming down. So part of this should also be, you should be part of, of this process as well.
Yeah, I did offer in my letter to you...
You need to use the microphone for this.
I did, in my letter to you, Mr. Chairman, I did offer that I would be willing to engage with whatever organs of the village that will be looking at how we can best meaningfully mitigate at this point.
Well, I think at some point, it'll be, it'll be up to the applicant to, to supplies with a landscape plan. And our architect will be looking at it. Our landscape architect will be looking at it. But I think at that point...
I'm sorry.
At that point, I think it would be appropriate for you to get together with our landscape architect and the developers' landscape architect and make sure that you're satisfied with what's being proposed.
So all the neighbors on our side, it's not just, will be kept in the loop, I hope.
Yes, yes. And you know, it'll be before the planning board, it's posted on the village's website as to what's on the agenda for each particular month.
We're aware where the trees came down, so we'll be looking at that.
It may be valuable in terms of this tree discussion, and I don't know how that gets scheduled, to do a little bit of a site visit walkthrough, because there's discussion about deforestation. My understanding is there's, you know, seven trees that came down and I'm not, I'm not belittling the impact of the trees that came down at all, but I want to, I think it would be helpful for us and our client, as well as for the board and neighbors, to have a clear understanding of what came down, what the real impact is, and so then we can come to a measured consensus about what needs to be done in order to address those issues.
Right. If you want to do that, when we finally come to an agreement as to where the, the building will be sited on the property, what the proposed height will be, I would suggest that you have your surveyor go out there and stake out the corners of the building, where it's going to be. We did this with, what's with our recall, we had the developer put balloons up showing what, what the height of the buildings would be. And then the neighbors can come out, take a look and see from their yards where the building is going to be located, with the size of it, it looks like it will be from their yard. So if you want to do that, where I'm agreeable to that, it's going to be difficult in the summertime to get everybody together, but I'm around.
But we all understand that, that no tree came out in the conservation easement, right? We're all aware of that.
Right. But there might have been other trees that could have been saved that did come out. I don't know. I mean, you know, you know, we're talking about trees that are gone now and you're coming in with a site plan of a house and the trees are gone now. But if the trees were there and you came in with a site plan, maybe we say, well, we should, you should move that house to take, to save some of those trees. So, you know...
Well, this, this is a very difficult site. And, and we have spent incredible amount of time designing and wrestling this house to, to work within the building envelope, to work with the rock, to work with the slope. So, where we can...
I think the reality of is, the house is sited so that it maximizes its views of the Hudson River. That's what it's, that's what it's doing right now.
That's, yes. That is one of the things that was important.
Right. So I think you're, yeah, you're entitled to those views, but you're also responsible for making sure that the house is compatible with the neighborhood too and, and fits in.
Right. Well, also, there was a neighbor here at the last meeting who expressed his desire and concern about the preservation of the rock outcropping. So we're, we're trying to balance a lot of significant interests in both what the client wants and also what is in the interest of neighborhood and the overall property, so...
Sure. I mean, but there are others, there are other, there are other site plans that would have worked there too. Other houses that would have worked there too. Didn't have to be constructed or proposed the way it's being proposed. It's not the only site, it's not the only site plan that would work on that site. So I think you're going to have to do things that will satisfy this board and the neighborhoods, neighborhood residents in terms of what the final site plan will be. Any other comments? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. See you. And if you want to set that up, if you want to stake it out at some, or maybe you come back the next week, everyone talks some more and make sure you have the, because you're going to have to work on the height of the building and the coverage, correct? Those two. So when you come back with a site plan that's closer to what the final will look like, I think then if you want to set something up and take a walk out there, in the afternoon or one weekend, we can do that.
Wouldn't it be better for her to, for them to talk to the, our landscape person first in terms of replacing the trees that were cut?
I mean, we can certainly do that.
Certainly speak to Ms. Muns and see which, what her suggestions are. But I think at some point, I want to get the doctor in with you so that at least the three of you, maybe if there are other neighbors, your next-door neighbor, if they...
I'm next door to the west. I'd like to be there and see where that wall is going to be.
Okay. Fine. And we'll just make sure that you're, they're all there and then you, if you want to meet with your landscape architect and our landscape architect, you can do that and see if it's satisfactory to, to the neighbors. All right. But I think at first, I think you should start firming up, you know, what the final site plan is going to look like and, and then we can do that. A little bit more. I mean, you're going to have to, again, coverage is over, so you have, we have the issue of the wall, which this board is not, not happy about, shall I say. And, and also, you know, the, the height of the building too. That's going to have to be...
Right. Well, we're, that's something we're already working on and we think we have that managed. And again, the coverage issue, we think is just, it's a graphic question. We've caught the numbers where we need them to be. So it was just a question of a graphic...
That wall too?
Yes. That wall, it was actually factored in. It was, just wasn't hatched to indicate that, so...
So let's get a little closer and then we'll set up that.
Yeah. And, and I don't want to... Yeah, and I don't want to, I mean, excuse me for my characterization, but you, it seemed to me you took lightly the issue of the trees. And as I said earlier, there are citizens in this village who can't take down a dead tree without a process that is quite involved, and to take down five or whatever the number was, live trees, willy-nilly, is something to be concerned about.
I was certainly not making light of the trees coming down. My only concern is in wanting to be clear as to what the perception of the trees is and what was in fact taken down, so there's a clear understanding of what the existing character of the property was before the trees were taken down, which will be clearly visible, right? Because there'll be trunks that were cut.
It's hard to visualize something that's not there.
No, no, what I mean is that the trees that were taken down.
You can't tell.
I think all the trunks have been removed.
They're gone.
So we'll do our best to address those concerns.
The concern of the neighbors in addition.
Yeah, obviously.
Just to work there is that.
Yes, Mr. Boyle.
Very specifically is that my big concern is the bulk of this, as I see it from the street, how it impacts both the street and others, so that everyone can comprehend this house. So that's why it's important to show, to present us, however you want to do it, in a way that my allies can comprehend.
Oh, we'll come now.
We're working on the model, the physical model, so we'll have that. I think that's going to help a lot, and we'll do the proper drawings that.
Thank you.
I think besides the model, it might be good to have a section through, your house to the house to the west of you and the house to the east of you.
Fair enough. Well, to the right of us, there is no house. There's a house in the valley, which is, I guess, the one next to that. Kind of goes around the bend. Two houses away, two properties away.
Yes, there's that large, yes, yeah.
But we're going to be higher because our rock is higher than anything else.
Understood, but to get a relationship, particularly the house to the west.
Absolutely, we'll do that as well.
Okay.
It sounds like a different house here.
Okay.
Thank you. Comments?
All right, thank you.
The next item is 2017-17, Brian and Marcy Cuff, Three Oak Street. Are you recusing yourself on this? Mr. Boyle's recused on this.
Good evening. I'm Earl Ferguson of Ferguson Malone Architecture, and we're here representing Marcy and Brian Cuff of Three Oak Street in Irvington. That's in the Spiro Park neighborhood. It's in a one-family, five-zone. They have a relatively small house in the neighborhood that have a growing family, so we're proposing to paint a small addition onto the south end of the existing building. There's two, there will be two front yards in this case. One of them is considered along Station Road and the other one along Oak Street because it's a corner property. The house and driveway are relatively close to Station Road. There are some in that neighborhood that aren't that close and some that are. It's a very mixed neighborhood in terms of styles and sizes of homes. The purpose of the addition will be for adding, making a new kitchen and a master bedroom, bathroom on the second floor. It's a two-story addition that would add approximately 600 square feet of living space to the existing house. The yard setbacks are existing, non-conforming with the existing house, and while we are building and proposing to build an addition over an existing deck, we would still be building within the yard setbacks. So we're very aware that we would be seeking a variance for the front, the west, the west front yard and the east setback, side yard setback. The, if you wanted to hear some of the numbers, the coverage, the proposed coverage exceeds the allowable by 9.3 percent, and it exceeds the existing by 5.6 percent. We inherited an existing coverage of 3.6 percent over what allowable would be. We're seeking another variance on a floor area, as the floor, existing floor area of the house is 99 percent of what the allowable would be. The 600, so it's actually less than 600 square foot floor area of the addition would put the floor area, the proposed floor area, some 27 percent in excess of allowable, and as such, 27.5 percent of the, above the existing. We realize that that's asking for a variance, that we would need to make a good case with the zoning board, and we would like to have the opportunity to do that. We've received Han's comments and as well as Muntz's associate's comments, and we will, we will submit our written responses and drawing revisions in direct response to those comments. I did have two points of clarification on Han's comments. I don't know if the board wants to address those right now or not. They're really very simple. One, it said that the application data sheet was incomplete and.
It wasn't actually incomplete, it was, it was not landscape, it was in portrait, so it cut off.
Oh, it cut off.
It actually did on all the applications from your office this time, so this column is missing.
I don't know if I got, if I got the other one.
On the, is that the electronic or the online?
No, it was there.
It was a hard copy. All right, we'll get that straightened out. Yeah, okay. We'll get that straightened out. And then there, item six asked for that the site is in the View Preservation District, and we acknowledge that, and it said that we must, it must be published because it's in the View Preservation District. We looked at the chapter 224, 151, and we couldn't see any requirement for publishing this particular application.
It's essentially in an odd spot. It's under, it's under the site plan requirements?
There is one, chapter 224 dash 169.
Oh, it's there.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have my code with me, but it's there. If you want to call me tomorrow, I'll tell you exactly where it is.
Okay.
Somebody actually copied it. One of the other applicants copied, actually copied it someplace in here. I'll find it.
I thought it had to be over five acres before it needed to be published. That's anyway, I'll call you.
It's in that paragraph that talks about the five acres and has other situations. And I'm not sure, I think it may say west of Broadway, it may say View Preservation, but it's in that same.
Yeah, west of Broadway.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll take care of that, and the comments from Muntz's associates will also be addressed. They had asked that we identify the species of a tree that we had suggested removing. It's a tree somewhere in this area where the entrance is to the house, and we will, we'll do that, we'll get it identified, but in addition to that, we'll try to preserve that tree if we can.
I think that was one of the questions, was, well, why was the tree being taken down? It didn't seem to be in the construction area or in the disturbance, the area of disturbance.
And there's a tree that's even closer, that's.
That's not being taken down.
This one here, yeah.
Okay, so that we'll, we'll address that. And then Muntz had made the comment that the construction access and topsoil stockpiling is to be shown, and I just wanted to point out to the board that that is shown on the drainage plant, not on the landscape.
Yeah, I saw that, and those trees are protected by snow fences. And is there enough room? No, down there. I thought that's where the construction access was, at least on the plans I have.
Right, it's off Station Road.
Yeah, off Station Road, and you have one of those sheets.
The drainage plant.
No, that.
Well, here.
Yeah, those are protected, and is there enough room for the construction access to get around between, between the opening, between protected and the existing house?
Well, they'll only be able to take machinery so far, and then there will have to be a lot of handwork done.
I didn't even scale it off, but what's the difference between the protection area and the corner of the house?
We don't know, but we'll, we'll indicate that on our research.
And how would they get to the back to do whatever they have to do with machinery? If they have to do anything with machinery?
We're going to use a combination of, can I see what?
Because you're going to need a foundation, right? You're proposing a foundation for the addition, so we have to get some sort of small.
We had another project like that in the neighborhood not too long ago, and they did have to do a lot of handwork. They were able to pump some concrete, you know, from a small machine, and didn't have to go all the way back. And so we're using, this is where we're, most of this is, so we will be using the driveway as well to help support that effort. But we'll give you some dimensions on the tree protection distances away from the construction.
And the other thing, my set of plans in the elevation, to see how high the second floor is. You got, you got numbers there.
It's actually the same height.
It didn't copy well. There, there it is.
This is existing.
It's actually at the same height.
It's at the same height. We kept it at the same. What else, Mr. Chairman?
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? No, I think, I think the only question I had, Earl, or concern that I had was the increase in the floor area ratio of 27 percent. So then I went back and I looked at the analysis that you provided, and while the FAR is going to be on the high side compared to a number of homes immediately around this home, also your coverage is going to end up being a bit lower than those houses too. So I think there, there's a, you know, an offset to the increase in the FAR. Your coverage isn't going to be as great as some of the coverages on the houses immediately adjacent, like House B, C, and G, I think. Some of those houses, the coverage is higher than what you're proposing, but their FARS are lower. So I think there's an offset, and you just have to make that case, I would think, to the zoning board. I don't know if anybody else has any feeling about the FAR or the coverage you might want to give proposals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to also show comparables for the neighborhood in general, and we can demonstrate how there are several, let's see.
Right, well, that's what I was looking at.
Several that are also over FAR.
Right.
Significantly.
I think those aren't quite as close to you as, you know, B, C, and G, I think are the closest ones. And those tend to have lower FARS, but their coverages are higher. So I think there's a balance there, so you can make that case.
I also asked Johnson to take a look at the FAR calculation. I'm not sure it was calculated in the attic correctly, so he's going to take a look.
Okay, lower high.
It might exist.
So did Mike, the coverage.
No, they don't take a look.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that, we'll get that checked.
I had some email showing that it was existing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? No? Yeah, I guess you can take it, go off the ZVA with it, and then we're going to have to address the questions here. Well.
You can't go until September.
Pardon? Until September. So Johnson, they're going to get back to you with the FAR issue.
You mean.
You can't make the August, September anyway, so you have to get the September plan going forward, and you can get on September as well.
Okay. Thank you.
See you in September.
Here he is. Yeah, the update with the cover paper.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jim Anacarco with Cronin Engineering, representing Mark and Tara Steinberg in this application. Their application is for a spa with a pavilion building in their backyard and a slight enlargement of a blue stone patio, flagstone patio with a stone bench and a fire pit. The proposed work or improvements are a total of 491 square feet of impervious area. We will require a coverage variance in addition to the 491 square feet. It's my understanding that when the lot was developed, it met the coverage requirements, but at that time, stone walls or walls were not included in the coverage calculation. So I've had to include them, and there are some fairly, you know, extensive walls on the property. So that brings the variance requirement up to just over 1,000 square feet of coverage, of additional coverage. So that, about existing six, almost 602, I think, was the stone walls.
Six hundred two square feet.
Two square feet of stone walls.
Of stone walls, out of, how much additional square footage are you asking?
400 and something.
491 is the actual improvement, so I think that's a total of 1,029. We've received. We've received comments from HON Engineering today, and nothing, I don't think, that can be addressed at all. We'll be, Doug is trying to find out some information on this drainage structure that was put in with the development of the house. Since I don't really have much information on it at all, right here is, there's a drain inlet which picks up the footing drains of the house, fairly deep, and then it also picks up the roof leaders and brings it to this structure back here, just in front of the wall. And I believe there's an overflow from that. I believe it's a detention structure, and it has an overflow down to the existing system down in Harriman Road. Found out today or yesterday that we will need to submit for a wetland and water course permit since there, this discharge to the Barney Brook just comes onto the property. So I will do that with the next submission. We will also, was also told that we need a FAR variance now because this pavilion structure needs to be included, or is included as FAR. So we will do that as well. I will calculate that. But it's fairly small, 221 square feet, so I will do that.
So it just sits on a slab, right? It sits on a slab because it's on top of the water and the gas line?
Yeah, it's actually on piers, so it's got a decking, and then the spa is, you know, not into the ground, it's not built into the ground, it's above, but it does have, you know, I think, six piers. The architect couldn't be here tonight because he's at ARP meeting in Orangeley, but yes, that's my understanding. I could show you the architect's drawings.
Well, I guess I just wondered why that side of the property rather than on the other side? Is there, is it access to the backyard? Is it?
Why this side of the property instead of this side of the property? I'd have to actually ask Mark and Tara.
Just the design.
Yeah, I mean, I was given the design from the architect, you know, he laid it out, so I'm sorry, I can't answer that right now, but the drain line is really deep. Like I said, it's about eight feet here at the corner of the house, and it gets deeper as it goes towards the backyard.
Privacy issue too. Privacy issue as well, it's more secluded on that side.
Okay.
Go back to the architectural, you know, we have a elevation here, showing, looking from the backyard towards the house with the structure here. Won't be able to be seen from the front, from the street. I mean, the house is 128 feet back from the street as it is anyway, but that'll be back from the street, you know, behind the house. The architect has proposed some plantings that he's shown on his plan here in some of the various views. We did get a review memo from Ms. Muntz, and, you know, she just, I think she only had two comments really, which was to denote trees that are eight inches greater in this area of the property on the side, and just show some tree protection plans in case they're needed on the plan, tree protection detail, and show the drip line to see how, but I believe most of these are conifers, and they don't go out, they don't extend out. So here is a front view of the pavilion building. It's got a gate here as required by pool coat. This is the, this would be the rear, rear of the pavilion, and this is the side, looking from the house, at the side of the pavilion. We'll have, it's got about two-thirds of a, you know, solid wall, and then about a third with open and gate. So that's typical for both sides of the structure. That's hit in a nutshell. Be happy to answer any questions anybody has, but like I said, we do have to go to the zoning board, so that would be the next step for us.
Any comments from the board members?
So it's just, it's just a hot tub in there, right?
Right.
It's not, and you're not going to be able to see it from, you're not going to be able to see it from Harriman, because?
I don't believe you'll be able to see it from Harriman, it's really pretty vegetated.
No.
And it's much lower, Harriman's much lower, I'd say about 30 feet lower
Right.
Than from the backyard here. But it is, you know, heavily vegetated in front of this retaining wall and behind this retaining wall.
Will there be an independent heat source, or is it from the house?
I would imagine it would be from the house.
Has this property been to, it's a relatively new house, correct?
Yeah. It's
Five years.
Five years, okay. Has, have you been to the zoning board for anything previous to this?
To my knowledge, no.
So everything else complied at the time?
When, yeah, I mean, I, this survey that you see here is the ASBIL survey from when the house was built.
Right, because there's a nice, long history of stuff that gets approved, and then magically comes back thereafter, and usually it's a pool, not a spa, so.
This was the last house that was approved in the
In the cycle, yeah.
Yeah.
And it sort of was, you know, well, that's just a process that one goes through, and thereafter, this board sort of kind of figured it out, and then basically came to the conclusion that, no, when a new house comes here, it's always maxed out, and that's how it, you know, don't come back, so to speak.
Right.
So that's why I was asking if this is an issue with, if they've come for other reasons. And yes, this board's also been involved in the change in the, in the coverage issue. And so I think we're all pretty sensitive about that too, because that's just, it's new, and there's got to be a way to figure that out. So I don't know what, how everyone else feels, so.
Well, I was wondering, the area you're showing yellow there between the spa and, yeah, is that added deck or patio?
That's added flagstone patio.
And there's a patio that's already there?
There is a flagstone patio that's already here with a barbecue in this corner.
Is there, is there a need to then add that additional patio, if you already have a patio out there? Again, because you're 20, you're almost 27 percent over on coverage. You know, while I pull it in a little closer, or just, what is the purpose for that additional patio?
I mean, it's my understanding that this was really added just so you could get to this, you know, you would walk on something solid, you get to the spa, and then walk to this side, you know, to get around to the fire pit and the benches.
Part of my issue with this stuff is it's the blowback of the next guy that comes in and says, oh yeah, well, you gave him this, then you're getting that.
Sure.
And that's part of the, what I think is the responsibility of this board, is to sort of understand that from a specific, this site and all that kind of stuff, no, it doesn't, I can see how it's not going to be an impact on the road, even though I can see those walls typically when I go up Harriman.
Yeah.
So that tells me I'm going to see the roof of that thing.
No, because you can't see the house. I didn't think you could, but I drove by there again before the meeting tonight, and you can, there are some evergreens back there, but they're kind of sparse at this point. I don't know how well they're doing, they don't seem to be filled out that much, and I think that structure will be somewhat visible from Harriman. And you probably, if it is, go forward the way it is, you probably should do some additional landscaping at the rear of that house, Harriman, at the top of that wall, something like that. Take a look at those, yeah, and August, take a look at those, those evergreens that are out there and see how well they're really doing. Maybe there's something, some other types of plantings that might do better. It seems to be a bit shaded back there. Might be something else that might do better in that location that will give you more screen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have a problem with doing that.
I mean, you raised a good point, George, and that's why I was asking you too, is what is, is there a need for having that additional patio? I mean, could you get the coverage down to closer to 20 percent rather than 27 percent? I mean, the ZBA may have a problem with that too. I don't, I don't think they like, they're particularly amenable to, you know, large increases in coverage that are substantially higher than 20 percent, so you may want to take a look at that, and I don't want to speak for them, obviously, but
Yeah, I understand.
From our point of view, again, there is patio out there, so could you just do one pathway to take out to the spa rather than creating another additional patio out there too?
I will talk to my clients, and we'll take a look at that and see what we can do, if there's anything we can do or do.
One more, what's, what do you mean by a fire pit?
Stone fire pit?
What do you burn?
Sit around and toast marshmallows.
Burning wood?
Sure.
Cognac counts.
I mean, this sounds like a, I believe the county has an open burning violation for that.
There is a code, and that fire pit meets the requirements within it. It's actually the, the New York State Building Code, they moved it, the old version, not this version yet, and just pushed it off to the New York State D.C., which has similar regulations as the, the New York State Building Code had. You really want to be specific, four feet wide, three feet high, a bunch of this ceremonial heating, there's a lot
This would not be considered open burning on the, I just didn't want you to see the building, something that you can't use.
It's actually well defined.
It's the health department coming around and says, oh, you're open burning.
Any other comments from either board members? Any comments from anyone in the audience on this matter? No? Okay. So, yeah, I guess we'll see if you want to take a, take a look at the issues that were raised here and then come back, and then we can, at that point, if you decide to reduce the coverage or whatever, or have, look at some plantings, and then come back and then go out to the ZBA. You won't be able to go to the ZBA now until September, also?
That's correct.
Anyway.
Okay.
We'll be meeting in August.
I understand in August, yeah, I understand.
You got two minutes.
And we'll meet in September before the ZBA?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I understand the ZBA, we can't make the, the 30-day notice requirement in the summertime, so.
But they're not meeting in August?
No, there's a 30-day notice if you have kept it on the first, that'd be fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Next item on the agenda is 2017-15, Roy Roos, 24 South Buckout Street.
Good evening, I'm Roy Roos, the property owner, and I propose to add four off-street parking spaces next to our three-family house due to the lack of parking on the street, and we were previously okay to remove the two spaces, get a net gain of two additional spaces. And basically, we propose to raise the grade up to just a couple feet in the back and gravelled area, and I just received, or my engineer just received information or engineering company comments from Han Associates, and so that's what we're trying to do, and a lot of its whole issue is the safety factor for our family and for our tenants, the street. It's not the best street by not having to get, we've almost been hit just by opening our car doors, so it's a big concern of ours, and that's why I'm here tonight.
Any questions, any comments from anyone on the board?
So where was, where was spaces on the street taken off? I mean, I don't, I don't
Be right here, right, and the drawings here, that's kind of small, I guess, scale-wise. Down, there's two spaces, there used to be a two-car garage here, that's been torn down a long time ago, there's still a curb cut there, although it was only one space that was, took that space out, and that was done a long, long time ago.
And how would, how would the, how would the four spaces inside be aligned? Would they be vertical or?
They would be straight in, and I think it's safer and easier to pull straight in and straight out, and then we designed that also because the factor of we didn't want to remove trees or landscape or green areas, that way we still have a pretty decent-sized backyard for kids to play.
But you're going to have to enlarge your curb cut then?
Yes. I propose, I have a page two on here, where we propose profile of the curb cuts, and the curb cut's going to be approximately 40 feet wide, 38 feet.
The depth, go ahead. I just wanted to clarify one thing that Mr. Roos had said, that it was previously approved. I think you were probably referring to the board of trustees.
Just the space removal.
Yeah, the board of trustees did not approve the layout, the whole thing was subject to site plan approval. The approval was conceptually, would they approve the room, because you can't just take parking spaces off, so what they said, yes, you could do it in exchange, but recognize that it had to be reviewed by the planning board for safety and all other reasons.
Did they review this, this proposed, okay?
Only in the, but it was reviewed, but not to see whether it was safe, or it was just conceptually four spaces instead of two, that was it.
But this drawing, this is
They did look at this particular plan, but it was not studied.
So just to be clear, it's two public spaces creating four private spaces?
Exactly.
And that's with the board? And what was their reasoning to say yes to this?
Oh, well, let me read, I did, I did send around the resolution.
No, I got that, but was there, were there comments that?
Well, that's where the reasoning is. The, the board had, I'm just going to read what they say, whether the, the board studied the parking situation in the immediate area, solicited and considered the opinions of neighboring homeowners, and determined that the elimination of two public parking spaces is outweighed by the advantage of eliminating four cars from parking on the public street. So that was the, pretty much the entire reason.
Any other board comments?
Well, I'm no parking expert, but having four cars now, like, yeah, I know that road is pretty, you've got to be careful, because it really doesn't fit two cars when they're parked on both sides. So now we're going to get four cars, they're going to back out into that, doesn't, seems to be even more dangerous, because they got to back out beyond the car that's parked right there in order to figure out if there is an area to go through. So for me, I get what you want to do, which is to get people for your house to be able to park on this thing, but to me, it seems like we're making a bigger, dangerous situation, and that's why I was asking what, how this board, the board of trustees made their decision? Did someone kind of go through this or not? They just said in, in abstract, yeah, two cars versus whatever, okay?
That was really the extent, but they never looked at safety. There was a scheme that showed where they would be, but they never did look at safety or traffic, that is, or anything like that, assuming that would be done by the planning board.
In HON memo, the first point in the HON memo is that proposed parking layout creates an unsafe hazardous condition. The parking spaces are located in front of a sidewalk, which would require vehicles to cross the sidewalk to enter and exit the four spaces. In addition, the street is narrow, has parallel parking on both sides, and has limited visibility. We recommend the applicant provide an alternate parking layout. I think one that would have a narrower driveway coming out onto Buckout Street and provide parking in a different configuration so that you don't have four cars that are lined up, ready to pull back out onto Buckout Street. I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, another thing I want to add though, too, also is that, you know,
We recommend the applicant provide an alternate parking layout. I think one that would have a narrower driveway coming out onto Buckout Street, and provide parking in a different configuration, so that you don't have four cars that are lined up, ready to pull back out onto Buckout Street. I think that's what you're getting at, right?
Yeah. Yeah, another thing I want to add, though, too, also, is that, you know, of course, I had, figured out before, site distance is pretty good on site, there's other neighboring driveways, two cars, in some cases, three-car driveways, that are configured the same way, although they're existing, they may, some of them may have been there for a long time, so, that's one of the things we kind of looked at, you can notice that you go up and down the street, it's other multifamily residents, it's the same way, so there's a lot of people back in and out already in driveways.
Are you talking about the gray, the grape?
Well, just like a lot of people are just pulling into their driveway, they go in and they back out, you know, on the same street, where they only have to look at a site distance.
Right, well, I think we're trying to, what I think the village engineer, what some of the board members are getting at, is that, that is a hazardous, that can be a hazardous situation, and we don't want to exacerbate that situation by having the possibility of another four vehicles being able to back out across the sidewalk, where pedestrians would be walking. So I think, again, we're looking at, take a look, have your engineer look at a different layout that narrows the driveway and puts parking, or creates the parking farther into your site, and unfortunately, it may mean more coverage and, and more asphalt, but I think it creates a safer condition, is what we're trying to get at here.
And you could do it so they only lose one space on the street, too?
Yeah.
Which would be preferable, too.
Just a matter of trees, I guess, versus vehicles and spaces.
Also, your backyard slopes, it's a big drop-
Yeah, there's a good slope.
It's going to require a lot of fill-
Right.
For those spaces.
Right, so what, the way this is, it's not nearly as much material, it needs to be brought in, it's four-foot height on the lowest point.
I understand, but I think that there's, that's the trade-off, right? Safety factor, so-
But it does, you're, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, but Roy, Roy, he comes, I walk my dog all the time on that road, and you're right, there are other garages on there, and I'm trying to think, God, does anyone have cars in there? And I've seen them open and-
Some are rolling driveways, too.
Yeah, so, uh-
All covered.
I'm going to say, for me, I didn't think of that, okay, and not that you want to make it any worse, but in essence, if you already have conditions like that, that is this really making it any worse, or is it making it potentially better, because now all the other people are pulling out, so many people will actually slow down, in a way.
Maybe we can make the road one more.
It's like, strength in numbers, I mean, that sounds ridiculous.
I think you have the traffic passing back and forth on South Buckout, too, and then you have the cars backing out in addition, so I think that-
It's also, it's also a two-way street.
But she got the commercial space right above-
Yes, which is-
If we can work on building shops, there's a whole, it's like-
With anyone who drives on Buckout, I always call it, it's, it's when you know who's civic and who isn't, and it, I won't say it's 50/50, but it, because it doesn't, you can't pass, someone has to go to the side to go through, and it's like our tunnel in Station Road, that, you know, thankfully, most people, not all, don't, they're polite, and the same thing on Buckout, that someone's got to give to let someone go through it.
Wow, so, I don't know, I'm-
Yeah, well, I think as, as cars have gotten bigger, it's become more difficult to drive on South Buckout in this location, and it might be that it's time for the villagers to consider that should this be a one-way street, and redoing the configuration.
I, I, I've spoken to Larry Shump about one-way streets many times, because coming out of Buckout Street onto Main Street, you can't see what's coming up the hill.
Right, because there's a parking space right up to the intersection.
So, we've been discussing the one-way street aspect for over a year, including Hefmung North, Mike Han, who also discussed the one-way street aspect.
What's the consensus for the board?
What's the, did you look at the retaining wall?
Did we look at it? Have you seen the one that is proposing?
Yeah, right here, I don't know how big it is, or-
There's a detail on the profile.
It's not very big.
About four feet, a little over four feet is the highest point.
It's a segmental-
It's a segmental concrete block.
Well, unless anyone on the board has a different thought, my thought would be, just have your, your engineer take a look at it, and see what, what could be laid out, if you just had a one, you know, one car driveway coming out of there, have the cars be laid out, or the parking spaces be laid out on your, on your lot with just a single driveway coming out onto Buckout.
Right, the four, the four is just challenging, because you have to pull straight back out, and what's, what's the parking situation on the other side, and how can you, how can you turn without, I don't know, concept-
Like everybody else does, on people that have all the driveways, you can, you can only turn so much.
Right, but other people have single driveways, they have single driveways.
Two-car driveways in North Buckout's got a couple of-
What about going, what about going back to, you, there was a two-car garage on the property years ago, why not just, you have two spaces, you've already had the curb cut?
Yeah, there's three family residents, so then somebody doesn't get space, you want-
Is there parking on the street now?
Yeah.
So, if, if you do a chill, as saying, you'd only lose one space on the street, because that person would still park on the street?
Right.
And all the people live at the Hefmung co-ops, and everyone has to park on the street every night?
Both Hefmungs have parking spaces available in the back, but not, not all units have, there's more people in parking spaces, there's more units that park.
Right.
But you could have another good point, which is that it's a three-family, and perhaps your engineer can figure out that-
A way to do it with three cars, you know?
And a single, single driveway.
Yeah, 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 we thought about the site view, but again, you know, it's a matter of trees, and that's basically it.
Doug, what's the standard latest version of parking space width?
As far as what, size?
Width of a parking space.
Village Code's what, nine and a half by 20?
That's what the Village Code is.
It's pretty tight.
Pretty big.
No, it's big.
Yeah, the ones on the strater are not even seven feet wide, and they're 18 feet long, and it's people, SUVs, those are the spaces.
I would just ask that, again, unless the board members object, have your engineer take a look at, coming up with some other alternate design where you don't have four cars all having access directly onto the street, and that, you know, reducing the driveway size.
And also showing how it's going to actually work.
Yeah.
How cars are backing in and going through.
Yeah, backing out.
Right.
You know, you had said that, that other houses-
Open in front, so why would you back in initially? That's what I used to do, a place I used to live in, broke, you know, in the business street, so, when I came in, I'd pick up, in, and the nose always faced out in the morning, but this, like, often.
Well, it also would be helpful, is an aerial or a site plan showing the locations of the other driveways, north and south of you, and across the street from you, so we have an idea of, you know, what's directly around this house, in terms of other driveways and parking spaces.
Also, these other houses are a bunch, are older, they're older houses, the driveways were used or not used, and the cars were smaller, so even though there were two or three cars in the driveway, they were smaller cars, now everyone has an SUV.
Yeah, lots.
Okay, so I think two things, I think, one, if you have your engineer take a look at the alternate layout, and then also, when we come back, to have a little bit more in terms of site planning, going beyond just your house, to show what, where the parking spaces are, and where other driveways are in the immediate vicinity of yours, I think that would be helpful, okay?
All right, there's a whole other list of things to hear out of Village Code, I need to go into it, as far as the wetlands and just water.
You know, so, I think before we get to that, take a look at the alternate plan, and let's see what works, and then we can start addressing more sites, more engineering-specific questions, okay?
Okay.
You can have Elliot call, so if there's any questions here, what's the-
Oh, yeah, we came to try to come in the next minute, this is the first one, I figured it was going to be a few bugs to work out, but, we have several choices, actually, in the layout, I wanted to minimize some coverage, that was one of my main objectives, my wife doesn't want the trees to be all taken out, although there's just two trees, questions.
Let's see what we can do.
Okay.
You got it. Uh, next item is 2017-18 Barbara and Robkin Cohen, 21 Matheson Park.
Hi, Earl Ferguson of Ferguson Malone Architects, we're representing Rajan and Barbara Cohen at 21 Matheson Park, this property is, is in a one-family 60-zone, it's, it's like five acres, and they have a, quite a long driveway, this is the one that, down on Bridge Street, right, you know, as you enter, or actually, that's not an entry anymore, it's just, they, the people who live here can enter there, but it's not a thoroughfare. They need to create three turnouts on the side at various locations on the side of the existing driveway, the proposal is to make those turnouts pervious surfaces, I think there's maybe a concern on the part of the board about coverage in general, even though driveways are not considered coverage in the code, there's been some discrepancies in, in our submittal on the amount of impervious surfaces, even though most of it really relates to driveways and turnarounds and that kind of thing. The, the, the purpose for the turnouts is really so that two vehicles can pass, two vehicles moving in opposite directions can pass, so somebody doesn't have to back all the way out, again, to allow the passage. The, we, we received comments from Han Engineering on this, and they had pointed out that there was some undocumented items that needed to be identified and legalized as a part of this application, we were kind of hoping we could do that offline or with, directly with the building department, because there are discrepancies in the submittal between pre-coverage and, and post-coverage diagrams that we submitted.
I emailed you the old survey.
Yes, there's some undocumented information that we have to add to it versus the work that was approved in 1996, it turns out. Do you can make that other, the highlighted one?
Now, that's-
It's just on the, it's on the survey, but anyway, I guess all I'm saying is that we will be back with that information.
Any comments from any board members? No? Any comments from any of the audience on this item? Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Would you please come up and take a microphone?
Yes, Catherine Croes, and we're directly to the south of Cohen's, I didn't see on the plan any indication of more lighting, if there is going to be any, and along the turnouts, and I hope there isn't, but I would want the architect to be very cognizant of the drainage and have it go towards Cohen, and there are beautiful trees where they need the drainage, and not toward me, which is where I'm 30 inches lower than their driveway, and-
Could you show me where your house is on the plan?
Right here.
Sorry, girl, I can't see it, Earl. Okay.
Right here.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So my driveway is 30 inches lower than their, than, excuse me, my basement is 30 inches lower than their driveway, so all the, all the runoff would come down toward me, which I, wouldn't be a good idea, so-
Is that an existing, Mr. Chairman, may I ask if that's an existing condition that needs to be mitigated?
It doesn't, no, it, the drain, the drainage, the drainage before this area was repaired was very bad, and it all used to come sloping down toward me, now it's fixed, and I hope it stays that way.
Okay, so you're not experiencing a drainage problem now?
Not now.
Now, okay.
Not now.
And so, how is the, that, the closest turnout is the third one in, so how, how is that, what's the slope there, and how's that pitched? It's pitched towards the field?
West, yeah, I think it's pitched to the west.
Or towards the north?
Uh, west, most of it is running downhill, you know, or towards the river.
And what they're doing is they did me purview, permeable pavers, but they did it according to the D.C. manual, so it's, 18 inches of gravel, everything goes in, it's not, it's not changing any drainage?
No, I wasn't worried about the impervious, or the pervious pavers, it's just resurfacing the whole driveway, is that going to be changed?
No, just changing, there's no grades changing or anything.
No grades are changing, just resurfacing.
Okay.
Yeah, and Catherine, I think you mentioned lighting.
And lighting, because there used to be lighting that, that's shown right in our bedroom windows, which was not good, and now that has been taken away, and I hope wouldn't be put back.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any lighting proposed? I didn't see any on the plan.
No, no, it's not, not part of the application.
I just, so there's some undocumented areas that have to be identified?
Yeah, we, we, John, so you told us.
That's it? All right, thank you. And the last item is 2015-32 Ardsley Country Club.
tonight on behalf of Ardsley Country Club, with me tonight is-
Rex.
Gedney from Crozier-Gedney Architects, Scott Blakely from Inside Engineering, Andrew Ballant, General Manager, and Danielle DeVito from Crozier-Gedney Architects, um, tonight we're here to ask you to approve minor site plan amendments to the site plan approved by your board in November 2015, to help rebuild the clubhouse, and, um, the minor changes include a new, a new utility yard, a new location for a dumpster, minor amendments to the topography of the practice putting green, restoration of the front entry circle of the property, converting the outdoor grill area, grill and dining area from temporary use to permanent use, removing the North Loja, and other minor grade changes, and before handing it off to Scott Blakely to go through the changes in a little more depth, I know yesterday, some members of your board, including the chairman, Mrs. Thai, as well as Ed Marin and Ms. Tashich, made a site visit to the property, and we also understand that Han Engineering issued a memo stating that there were, um, multiple improvements, and each were minor in nature, and therefore they had no comments, so assuming we're able to successfully answer all your questions tonight, we would ask your board to vote to approve the minor site plan amendment, and with that being said, I'll pass it off to Scott.
Good evening, as Michael mentioned, there were a series of modifications made to the plan, some of which included the modification to the putting green, there was an existing putting green located here, putting green was removed and replaced with temporary offices and trailers for operation of the club facility while they were going under, while the building was undergoing renovation based on the fire that had, had happened at the site, those Those temporary trailers were removed, and the putting green was regraded, reconfigured in basically the same location. There was a dumpster enclosure added in a location here. This location was chosen because of the direct access off of this aisle. It's fully fenced. We did supply photographs of the dumpster enclosure, also of the putting green. The utility yard that Michael mentioned is located at the base of this slope, adjacent to the curling building, down in this location. The electric yard has the new transformer, the generator, and other switching equipment. That was located in this location. We're also proposing modification, slight modifications to the reconfiguration of the existing circle. It's basically the same circulation pattern, same number of parking spaces. What we did was, we're proposing to recurb, the curbing in the pavement in this area was somewhat removed during the process of reconstructing the building. It was used as a staging area. So, what, what the club is proposing to do is to relocate the curbing that was located in this dash line here, and that was tough to see from there, but on your drawings, you should be able to read it. And we're basically just widening this access drive to provide two-lane access. So, if somebody were to pull up and drop off, valet parker, whatever, they still have the ability to get another vehicle by directly in front of the building. So, this is slightly widened by about eight feet. There were some slight reconfigurations just of the, of the access at the members' entrance here, but that was impervious surface to impervious surface. So, this, this we worked out for ADA compliance between the two buildings. It's minor site change. The outdoor grill and dining terrace that were installed as a, as a temporary use are now proposed to remain as a permanent use. For the, for the members or of the commission that were out there and saw that, you know, this, this area was an impervious surface, was basically a known net increase in impervious surfaces associated with this. This area was, was, the access to this was redefined, and was actually pulled in a little bit from its temporary condition. And the last item was some regrading on the, on the west slope of the site. Again, there's some photographs. And that's the backside of the clubhouse building. And that's in this area here. And that was, there was utility connections that were made, there was a new water connection, sewer connections made, some modifications around the propane tanks. Down at the bottom of the slope is where we installed the infiltration system for the increase in imperviousness from the building. That was installed per the approved plans by your board.
I think, you did mention about the, did you mention about the transformer location?
I did. That's, that's what we refer to as the, as the electric yard. And that's down at the bottom of the slope by the curl, by the curling building.
Where are you gonna put the new dumpster? Where was that?
The new dumpster is located right here. This is-
So, on the other side of the parking?
Yeah, on the other side of the parking, fully enclosed with a fence, and there's a photograph of that.
Where was it?
Good evening, Rex Getney. The dumpster used to be right adjacent to the building here, and was actually the source of the fire to the clubhouse. So, being a little sensitive to that.
Yeah.
The further the way, the better. So, its location, it's been temporary, it's worked very well for the club, and it makes a lot of sense, so we're just, it is enclosed and screened, so that's the best location.
And you also talked about, last time, you talked about the second means of egress off that patio?
Yes, so, Scott, I don't know if you have another comment?
I'm second.
Is that, it's not the dining room?
It's on the third.
Third page.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is shown on here, it's just right at the break point.
So, this, the patio that's here now, it existed, we did modify it. Originally, we had an exterior loggia that ran across here, that was eliminated. But we still need to provide an emergency means egress off of the patio. So, that, that is in this location here.
So, you don't have, you don't have a patio in the back anywhere that's open, right? Can I say anything?
We have a patio that's on the west elevation. So, yes, patio that existed is still there.
Still there. But it's enclosed now.
Well, actually, the main patio that was running over, that is enclosed. But there was also an exterior patio adjacent to the dining room that was always open.
Right.
And that remains open. There was a slight modification, expansion to that, that was approved on your original site plan.
And you're, the temporary dining area is by the, it's by the golf house?
Correct.
Pro shop, down at the bottom, right in there?
Correct. So, during, again, during the club, this was completely out of commission. There was an outdoor grill that was constructed here, and they were able to have functions. It was successful, membership liked it, so we'd like to try to maintain it. It's just a seasonal outdoor barbecue grilling area for events, outings.
Because you also had, you also had an inside area, that was in the clubhouse or next door?
In the, in the lower level of the pro shop, where the bags, the golf bags were stored, they were vacated, and we used that area as a temporary dishwashing, food storage, and so forth. That was all permitted under a temporary basis, that's all been removed at this point.
Any other comments, questions?
Were there any complaints by the neighbors since the temporary stuff has been done?
I can't say if there is complaints, maybe the general manager could speak to it, but I do not believe there were any related to this activity of the temporary uses.
So, no complaint about, I'm just asking if there were any neighbors that complained about smoke or anything like that?
George, we're not aware of any. The only complaints we have are the rock hammering during the construction.
Okay.
And it's not really close to entering.
I, I totally get it, I'm just-
I didn't realize that, so I might question it, because that was my question as well.
Right, and I remember that when you got approval, there was concern from the neighbors as they're clipping in about the noise, especially during events. And I think we required you to do some, something with the windows and things like that to mitigate that somewhat.
That's correct, and I think that was related to the dining area that was basically an awning facility, and now it's completely fully enclosed.
Right, and that's why I was just asking that all this work happened, and what was the outcome from the neighbors? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from your board members? No? Anyone from the public have any comments? No? As I said, yes, Sheila and I were out there yesterday, and I think, Sheila, do you have any other comments?
No, I think the reconstruction has been fabulous, and the matching of the brick, which I mentioned yesterday, was excellent.
Thank you. I think the only comment I would have, though, is that just need to get those electrical conduits in and completed and covered back up, and get that hillside stabilized where it's running down onto the transformer pad. But other than that, I think everything looked fine out there.
Yeah, they're working on that, David.
So, if nobody has any comments, then Mary, any other resolutions?
On November 4th, the planning board granted site plan approval to the Ardsley Country Club to restore its clubhouse following fire damage in December 2014, along with expanding the second and third floors of the clubhouse to comply with current New York State Building Code and ADA requirements, expanding the existing dining room on the first floor, expanding the terrace areas in the rear of the clubhouse. Whereas the country club is coming back, is coming close to completing the restoration work, and is applied for minor amendments to the approved site plan, namely, creating a new utility yard, relocating the dumpster, minor regrading, resurfing the front-entry circle, converting the outdoor grill and dining area from temporary to permanent use, and installing a second means of egress at the north elevation of the clubhouse. Han Engineering reviewed the plans, and then a memorandum dated July 10th stated that it had no issues with the amendments. Planning board held the public hearing tonight, whereas the amendments are minor and do not require additional review under SEGRA, and will therefore be resolved. The planning board grants the application for amended site plan approval as reflected in the drawings entitled "Ardsley Country Club." The drawing's subject to one, submission of a stabilization planting plan to be approved by Lucille Muntz, the village's landscape consultant, and two, identification of trees to be removed and replacement trees, the type and location of which must be approved by Lucille Muntz.
Right, and was there something about the stabilization, too?
That's the first thing. Submission of a stabilization planting plan to be approved by Lucille.
Okay.
You had your comment about the electrical conduit.
Pardon me, well, that was that stabilization.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a hillside where there are major electrical conduits coming down to that transformer, and it was exposed. The thing is, though, the way it's situated, it comes downhill, and it slopes, it turns to the left, and there's a berm that's been created, a lot of work, so that any of the runoff is going down towards the transformer pad, it isn't running off at this point, but they just need to get out there and finish it off and stabilize it. So, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a clarification, the stabilization plan, you're referring to the area where the utility area is?
Yes. Agreed. I think that's it for the scene. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.